You're watching BCTV, Branford's Community Access Station.
This is BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of Branford.
Okay, we're gonna get started for Board of Finance, Town of Branford, special meeting April 9th, 2018. And on the agenda is two items, the first item being to hear a follow-up presentation from the Board of Fire Commissioners with regards to their staffing plan to consider and if appropriate make a recommendation to the Commission with regards to its applying for it. Staffing of adequate fire and emergency response Safer Grant. This is a follow-up, obviously, to our March 26th presentation to the Board of Finance. So, um, with that, I'll turn it over to you, Chief. I think you've provided us with some, a lot of information over the past month, you and your staff and Commission, and, um, which has been helpful. I think there's still some questions, and so tonight is to try to resolve some of those to give you some direction which you'll get one way or the other, so.
I appreciate that, and I certainly do appreciate the amount of time your Board's put in to try and understand our, our need. And, um, just with that, Joe, what I'd like to just give a quick recap, how we got to the, to the point that we are. Um, in fiscal '16, we, we presented a three-year staffing plan. That three-year plan, um, which the upcoming budget year, fiscal '19, would be the third year of the plan, was a, um, our attempts to, to increase our staffing in a, in a much more cost-effective way by bringing in part-time EMS-only staff that could really work on the overflow ambulance calls and, um, absorb the amount of call volume that we have been experiencing. Our call volume has increased approximately 23% since our last manpower increase in 2005. The, um, no matter how we get there, at the end of the third year of the plan, the goal was to be able to have two firefighter paramedics. Um, if we used the full three-year, uh, part-time staffing plan, that would allow me to replace them with part-timers, take them off of an ambulance which transports out of town, as you know, and keep two more people in town. Make, um, put them in a light rescue truck. Um, they would be kind of all-purpose, whatever the call is, they do. But their primary role on a day-to-day basis with the EMS call volume would be to increase the efficiency of the calls, have that extra sets of hands there for the lifting, moving, carrying, and, um, you know, in the initial stages of those more complex medical calls, and reduce the amount of time that we're taking the third person off the engine and not having the main fire engine available. So, um, what we've experienced over those two years is, is the revenue came in, um, we've kind of hit the saturation point, we got, um, where we're able to handle our calls. But historically, the fire department's staffing levels is designed to, um, not only absorb the daily call volume, but stretch a little bit for those, those days where, where we get really busy. The problem is, even with the part-time staffing that exists today, we're stretched all the time. Right now, we don't have an ambulance available. They're all out on calls, and, um, you know, additional automatic fire alarm took the rest of the staff out. Um, we would be able to cover that by sending a first responder and bringing a call-in crew, but that happens so often in our, on our, our call-in crews and our volunteer staffing has, has gotten to the point now where, um, we really feel the, uh, we need to have the additional staff here. So, um, after having the two years of, of part-time experience, and, um, it's worked well, but we, we've realized is to have the amount of shifts we would need to fill, we would need that many more part-time employees. It's very difficult to manage that many part-time employees. The available pool of part-time employees is, is kind of finite around here. They all work full-time somewhere else, and that's where we're, we're drawing these people. So we really thought and said, "Listen, you know, it, it may be time to, to approach the Board for full-time positions." So I did present, um, a couple of different, um, budgets, and, and because it really hadn't been publicly talked about, and, and, you know, certainly, uh, a forum such as this, we've talked about it a lot in the Fire Commission meetings, um, but I don't think they're as well-watched as the, uh, the regular meetings of the town. Where, um, you know, we, we talked about the need for staffing, and, you know, we were asked to come in this year with a, a budget more in line with the third year of the plan. So we did that, but it wasn't the full year of the, uh, the three-year staffing plan. At the same time, um, we, we were hoping to take advantage of, of, we've, we've asked to apply for the staffing, um, for adequate fire and emergency response grant, the Safer Grant in the past. Um, but the resistance to us applying for that is really, until you can get your head around the need for the additional personnel, there's no sense in applying for the grant. So, we, we kind of came before you tonight looking for, um, the approval to apply for the grant. I think that, um, we, last meeting, we were able to show the resources of the fire department, how they are deployed, then, um, what the standard is for that deployment, and how we are not quite getting there. Um, so, we also, um, as a, um, follow-up to that meeting, have come up with, um, the details that we have before you, or the data that we have before you that talks about, um, the cost of hiring these additional firefighters. And we were asked to present two plans, one of them was the eight firefighters. And the reason that we're asking for eight firefighters all at once as opposed to four is to put another response vehicle on the road. We really need to have two people in that vehicle. And so with the four, the four shifts that we have, that work a 42-hour work week, when they cover that seven days a week, 24 hours a day, um, we would need to hire eight additional firefighters. But we were asked to present two plans, one with four and one with eight. So that's what you have before you. The, the first two are with the Safer Grant. And then the last one, which we can talk about, is, um, should we be unsuccessful in, in receiving the Safer Grant? It really doesn't change the need, uh, for us, but how we might be able to get to that in a little bit, um, easier way than all at once.
So we can walk through those, Chief, but maybe, um, just answer, I guess, a basic question as well as, in this year's, this year's budget, you've asked for, you did ask for a substantial increase in the part-time.
Right.
So, that really was, from, from one year to the next, what is the absolute need for that that wasn't there last year that now is there?
Well, so, that, it's a good question, in that it, it, the need was always there. It actually precedes me asking for any part-timers at all. But, you know, we just, some people think we were still in the recession. We haven't really come out. So the need was there in 2008. We weren't gonna ask for more firefighters during this recession time. There was a couple of steps taken, um, to increase some, um, shifts through the use of overtime, which we did. Um, at the same time, you know, we had a $12 million, $12.5 million firehouse built. So, you know, we didn't talk a lot about the needs for, for the personnel. But we were getting hammered. And, um, historically, the fire department doesn't get personnel until, you know, in anticipation of needs. It's usually after we're already unable to meet those needs. So about every 10 years, we've increased staffing as the, as the town and the call volume grew, and, um, we're about, uh, 13 years into our last, um, increase in any type of staffing. So, when I began the part-time, I, I felt it was a way to kind of start to soften the impact and start the discussion. And, um, you know, certainly, it works. Um, a mix of part-time and full-time here. In the past, we eliminated the part-timers altogether, absorbed them entirely with the full-time staff. Um, any plan that I presented, including what, what we're asking for now, still includes a portion of the part-timers, especially during the busier, um, daytime hours where we have just, uh, an enormous impact, um, from just the amount of doctors' offices and healthcare facilities and elderly housing that we have in town. It's really driving the EMS side of the, of the call volume.
So, um, so I'm just trying to set the stage of all of that. So that really, your increase in part-time was about, um, a little over 6,000 hours? You had $3,400 additional time, right? And then another $2,600?
For this year's request?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um...
It's about 6,000 hours or something?
Right, and so when I came in with originally, was, um, you know, in our preliminary budget discussions with, uh, the town staff and the finance director and some, uh, Board members, was, you know, I was gonna present the, the plan to hire the eight right in my budget. And I was, I was asked to kind of cut that back a little. So, we, we increased, um, we added a second ambulance Monday through Friday, um, as part of this request. We also increased the Rescue Two, which is the one we fund through overtime, which is part in this 304,0686 that we initially asked for. So we didn't quite go the 24 hours, but we added a substantial portion of the part-time plan, um, as opposed to asking for the eight firefighters.
Right, because if I just look at the budget the way you requested it, with the additional, uh, $171,000, I think you broke down on this page, plus the extra 50 hours a week, that's about 6,000 hours, which is about three personnel, two, 2080 hours. But, so, I know we're getting to the Safer Grant, but this is pushed by the medical?
Primarily by the medical, yeah.
Okay.
So, and that's, the medical is, if, if we go all the way back to, um, our last staffing, historically, our fire calls are staying pretty, it's pretty steady. You know, there's some years where we do more, there's some years where we do less, but overall, the trend is they're not really going down. We, they, they went down drastically in the eighties, um, and they've pretty much stayed steady since, um, as far back as I can get the data, which is the, like, 2000. But we were more in balance between the staff we have to address any potential fire calls. Um, and fire calls, just so everyone knows, it's not, um, you know, fire, EMS, um, EMS being the transport medical services, but, you know, any rescue services we provide, extrication, um, water rescues, rope rescues, confined space, whatever the scenario is, that, it's all encompassing. So we have to have the staff available to do all of those functions. And the EMS calls have been so prolific now that our, we're out of balance with the available personnel to answer not only the overflow calls or the stretch in that bubble, but having adequate personnel to address some of these other calls that we're responsible for. While certainly less frequency, there are the high-risk, low-frequency calls that, you know, we really need the available people here to take care of.
And do you anticipate your call volume will, um, actually increase?
I don't think the call volume's gonna decrease. I think it'll, you know, historically, it has, um, increased incrementally. We don't have large increases of, um, calls from year to year, but when you look at it over a period of time, um, and I think we've provided that in, in the call data. Yeah, it's in the, uh, it's in the big spreadsheet, Joe, where, uh...
Yeah.
You can see that the, uh...
Broken down.
You know, it hasn't been a dramatic increase year to year, but it's a steady upward trend. And since our last manpower, um, increase, it's about 23% more than when we, uh, went to the eight-man shift to where we are today.
Right, right.
At the same time, it's, it's important to note that as much as the volunteer staff that we have on board is dedicated and do, does the best they, they can, since the 1997 study, um, we have had a 38% decrease in the amount of overall active volunteer members, and we've closed three whole volunteer companies. So we've lost that component, and the component that we have is, is stretched thin. And like I said, to their credit, they do a great job, but they have lives and families, and they aren't available to the extent that they used to be. Most people that volunteer used to live in town. Most of our volunteers no longer live and work in town, so... That, that's an extra, um, burden that's been contributing to our, to our need for this personnel.
Right, right. So, um, and before I turn it over to the Board, I'm sure we have several, many questions. So the revenue piece of it, because again, this is, this is, your manpower requirements are driven by the medical primarily.
Right.
That the revenue, that projection going forward is probably fairly flat?
It, it would, I think we've been able to, um, you know, in, in the, in less than, um, three years now, we've increased the revenue by half a million dollars because we've captured all those calls that we were passing to others. But it's, that's taken all the resources we have just to do that, right? So that's, that's the daily call volume with no stretch. And so while the call volume will most likely increase a little bit year to year, the revenue, um, we would, we'll probably have about a 2.5% rate increase. Um, at our next rate increase, um, which is, uh, through the state of Connecticut, they dictate that. And, um, we still have a small amount that we're probably not capturing, but, um, we're always gonna have a, a few calls that we're just gonna have to pass to our mutual aid partners. But as call volume increases, correspondingly, so does the revenue.
And so the numbers that you put together with regards to a cost for one firefighter, with the fringes, those were done in conjunction with Town Hall?
Yes. So the, uh, the benefits package were all contributed by, uh, the finance department.
And the reason why you use, you add in accrued time is because you have to replace that person?
Yes, so the accrued pro, the time does include their vacation, their, um, any personal days, et cetera, that they, um, get through their contract. Because if somebody is, if I'm off, my pile gets bigger. If a firefighter's not available, I can't put the ambulance on the road. So they are replaced at a man-for-man, um, replacement at this time.
Okay, so maybe I'll open it up to the Board. Charlie, you got some questions?
Yeah, I have a little, first time, thanks for your time last week. That was very helpful. You had all the information that Bob and I wanted, and so thanks for providing all that data. You were very helpful. I have a little, uh, bit difference on the, on the revenue, because, you know, I looked at the, um, the demographics in town. Uh, the people are getting older, right? They're living longer, the seniors are not moving.
Right.
And I think there's gonna be more of a, uh, a demand for, uh, increased revenue for the ambulance service. Further, I look at the Atlantic Wire project that's gonna, you know, be developing. There's, uh, I see there's 30 more custom homes gonna be built on Gou Lane, and maybe a hotel in the, from the Branford River in the future. So I do see there is a need for firefighters and, and paramedics. Because my understanding is, though, that should you, um, employ any new firefighters, they will all be paramedics?
Um, one of the things that we've had in the union contract since 1995 because of the way we, we operate here. Half of our current staffing is deployed on two ambulances. And then Engine One, the, the only career engine, um, is also a paramedic engine. So when the ambulances are transporting out of town, that next medical comes in, we still have a first responder paramedic who can bring the emergency room to your doorstep and begin care. But one of the things that, um, as we increase staffing, we may have the opportunity to do is renegotiate the need to have everybody be a paramedic. Because it is rather expensive, um, in training, in continuing education, and the stipends to, to do that. So it's one of the areas where we would need to negotiate, because their contract is current right now, um, until 2019. Um, but we look to try to find some cost savings in, in, in doing that. And the other part of it is the available pool of paramedics. Um, anybody listening on TV right now, if you want a job, go to paramedic school, you're guaranteed a job, so... Because there is a, um, you know, not only has Branford discovered that it's the best service to our community, but it, it also brings the revenue in the door to provide it as a fire department as opposed to contracting outside.
Listen, there's one more thing I wanna bring to the attention of the Board. I didn't notice, you know, and Tom told me, but when a firefighter starts out, he starts at a salary of 70% on step one. Then his second year, he goes to 80%, the third year at 90%. So that helped me to understand the salary increases that I saw on the sheets.
Right.
So, I didn't know either. You know, we all knew that or not?
All of that is incorporated in here, and the reason why, in some of them, it seems like it's a significant jump, whereas you'd expect, like, someone might get a 2.5% raise, but they're getting whatever the approved contractual raise is on top of your step increase.
Jeff, got a question?
Yeah, I got a couple, Joe. So, under today's situation, Chief, when you have a building alarm come in, you're staffing the, you know, Deputy Chief's Car Engine One, et cetera, how many personnel are responding on that?
So our typical response to the automatic fire alarm is, um, two engine companies, um, one, the career engine, the volunteer, as well as, um, Truck One, which is our ladder truck. And to staff that ladder truck, we typically take a crew off an ambulance to staff the ladder truck. We no longer send the other ambulance to automatic, um, fire alarms. The only time we send all the available resources to any one call is if it is truly dispatches a building fire.
So when you're taking the staff from an ambulance, you're taking them from ambulance one, two, or three? Is that correct? Because they're firefighter paramedics, and the other two, four, and five are EMS personnel?
So one, one and two are the firefighter paramedics?
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, Medic Three is the part-time staff?
Okay.
Four and five are, are available for the call-ins and are not typically staffed unless we exceed the three, like, um, when we started this meeting.
Very good. Um, a couple other questions. So Rescue Two is what vehicle?
Rescue Two currently is, is the, um, Tahoe that was replaced. The Deputy Chief's Tahoe got moved down. We got rid of the Crown Vec, and so Rescue Two is, is, um, the, um, 2011 Tahoe.
Mm-hmm. So that was put in service this past year when you replaced that?
Right, and but prior to that, we were using the, uh, the Excursion, which was, is the 16-year-old, I think, yeah.
Correct, correct.
The, when we do, um, when we do, uh, achieve our goal of having these two additional firefighters, our intention is to put them in a light rescue truck. Um, it's already been scheduled into the apparatus replacement plan, and then, um, do away with one of those smaller vehicles. But the light rescue truck will give us a more of a capability to allow these two firefighters a broader range of, of, uh, tools that they bring with them to a call.
Mm-hmm.
We, we have, um, historically used the, uh, volunteer rescue truck, which is more of a heavy rescue.
Correct.
And, again, back to the volunteer problem, it, it really doesn't get out for a lot of the calls. So we're, we're trying to expand the life of that vehicle, um, but make it a real heavy rescue, so it only gonna carry that, you know, those tools that you have for those once-in-a-career-type call. Whereas the light rescue's gonna be more of your 90% of everything we do all the time equipment.
So Rescue Two has to staff?
It will have to staff. Right now...
It only runs with one?
It's Monday through Friday, only for 10 hours a day.
Okay.
Um, and it's not, you know, uh, again, the, uh, the union is, um, you know, from a safety perspective, kinda banging on that, but they've understood that we're, we're making progress towards these, these ends. So, um, you know, having one person out there by themselves as opposed to, um, you know, we're, even with the police department, they put one person in the vehicle and they do a lot of stuff, but they tend to bring a bunch of police officers together. Whereas when we're dispatch, we're more of a team-oriented thing. Um, one person really can't do a lot in our world.
Okay. Um, if things were favorable tonight, um, the anticipation is you'll be hiring firefighter paramedics?
Right.
What if you couldn't find enough people to fill the slots that are firefighter paramedics?
I think that, um, one of the things that we would explore, other than renegotiating the need for everybody to be a paramedic, and there's many ways we could do that. We can reduce the, maybe on the backend, there's guys that have been a paramedic for a long time, we can allow them to drop it. Um, so we have to bring in the new people. Um, lateral transfers is another thing that we're looking at. So people, um, who are already working for us part-time, that work at, um, another job somewhere else, but maybe are, their benefits aren't as, you know, and their environment isn't as nice as Branford's, so we'd like to be able to, uh, extend an offer to them. But right now, the contract doesn't allow for that. So, um, I think, you know, my preliminary discussions, um, with, um, the union, uh, leadership, that they would be amicable to exploring some of these options. Um, the other thing is we would, um, not be hiring anybody until, uh, like, a mid-year type of hiring. So it'll give us a little bit of time to ramp up for, I mean, it, it's not unprecedented. We've kind of, um, you know, hired any groups before. Eight at once is, is a little bit...
Is everybody hired, gonna be required to go to the Connecticut Fire Academy?
Um, we have been trying to send everybody to the Connecticut Fire Academy. Um, with a group this big, um, we have talked about a couple of different options, one being a, more of a localized academy where, because we have eight, we could run our, kind of our own mini-academy. Um, but we have made the commitment to that, Jeff, just because, you know, they get a great education up there. And they, it covers everything from sexual harassment training to, you know, hazardous materials and weapons of mass destruction awareness and, and all kinds of stuff in between, so... But it, you know, at the end of the day, it's gonna come down to, you know, what, what we can really afford to do. And the laterals wouldn't need it, because they would already be...
Correct, so like, if somebody was on ambulance five and was a paramedic and wanted to apply, I mean, I would imagine there has to be requirements like firefighter one or firefighter two. Is that a possibility?
Yeah, so somebody who's already a paramedic, sending them to the Fire Academy is, you know, we, having them be a paramedic is, is really the, that's, that's the training that we'd like to have. Um, and, and so in the past, we've done it both ways. We've done in-house, um, we've just accepted someone with a firefighter one or two certificate. Um, but our experience with some of the local classes as opposed to the Fire Academy is quite a bit different in the, in the actual hands-on training that they get. But it's, it's an area where, um, we're looking at the various options, but it's, it's doable no matter what the deal is.
Okay, 'cause some of my questions are predicated on what additional costs that I don't see here for replacing an individual that might have to go off to school to cover the shifts or whatever, you know? What, what could that entail us, or what's not being presented up?
So the typical cost, because these are all new positions. Right now, if we send someone to the Connecticut Fire Academy, we typically would, we, we have to replace them because they're an existing position.
Correct.
So we're paying two people. In this scenario, since it's all new, until we bring them on, we're only paying them to go to school.
Okay, very good.
Um, and our, we think our, between our professional development and, you know, we might have to do a little moving between line items to cover the cost of the Fire Academy, um, we feel we have the money and the budget to do that. Thank you.
Uh, I think Lorraine was looking, asked some questions.
I, I have a couple of questions, and it has to do with the, um, billing process, because you generate certainly a lot of income.
Right.
And how does that work as far as the, uh, the staffing for it? And do we need a full police officer when you're, uh, first doing that?
For the billing portion? Should we contract all of our billing out to a third-party billing company? And then, um, also a collection, um, company? So they handle all of it, when they, uh, we use an electronic run form now. Um, it, it captures the patient data as well as the demographics and the billing information. All of that's automatically electronically transferred to our billing company. They take it from there, and then, um, the money just comes into our bank account.
So this is, our numbers are...
Lorraine, I think we're actually...
These numbers are a net number? This is where you pick up this, this revenue?
Right. This, yeah, this is actual cash in the bank, not gross.
That's the, yeah.
Yeah. So we're actually sending the bill before we even deliver them to the hospital. It's that quick.
Okay, Charlie, and then Bob.
Chief, I think you told me the Fire Academy cost is about $6,800. That's not here.
That's, that's the, uh, Fire Academy at, uh, Windsor Locks.
No, but I mean, that money is not...
In the budget, no. It's, it's in our budget now. Um, and so traditionally, we, we have that money that covers a whole range of different training. For a year like this where things are unusual, we would put all additional training on hold. And since we don't have to pay, the, there's two line items. One, professional development covers the cost of the class itself. The other one is educational incentive, and it typically pays the overtime... and it typically pays the overtime for the person replacing the person at the class. If I don't have, because these are new positions and I don't have to replace that person from educational incentive, I can then transfer that money to cover the additional costs.
Okay, so that's within your budget?
That's within our budget.
The safer grant doesn't cover that cost?
It does not cover that cost.
Okay, now, listen, we got presented with a scenario of four fighter, four firefighters. Now, there had to be some thinking that maybe four is the right number. Is there a downside to that, other than the feds may not look favorably, something of four versus eight?
Four firefighters doesn't put the extra vehicle on the road that we're looking to do. I'm not gonna put one person in a vehicle twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. It's not a safe scenario for them. You know, we've been pushing the envelope a little bit here and there with the Rescue Two situation, but it's only during the daytime hours when there's a lot of other people paying attention to what's going on. From a, from the grant perspective, the reason why, you know, I didn't present the four because I wanted to, I presented it because I was asked to show the difference. And so, from a perspective of the safer grant, which is what we're asking to apply for, it's designed, you know, it's a competitive grant, the money's finite, they look at the impact on your operations. So, if one firefighter is only gonna get you ten percent better than you are today, but two firefighters will actually make us thirty percent better, and that's because I'm putting another firefighting vehicle on the road. And so, one person will help, but it's not enough of an impact to make us competitive. And that's one of the things that we've learned through Rosa DeLoro's office and others is when you're applying for these grants, what are the pitfalls, what are the things to look for? Guilford applied for the safer grant for four firefighters, they were unsuccessful. They recently applied last year for eight firefighters and they were successful. So, currently, our town to our east, who does significantly less call volume than the town of Branford, has two more firefighters per shift than the town of Branford does right now, so. Not that we're in competition with Guilford, but it just kinda helps put things in perspective and how much, you know, we do do with the available people that we have. In fairness to them, they have a larger geographical area that's covered in North Guilford, so. But, you know, that's one of the things we learned about applying for the grant.
And Tom, you did present it, though, and since I had to think about it, what would you do if you got the four, or phoned me for it?
I would either ask the board for additional money in overtime to hire somebody back. We, in the scenario two with the four firefighter, if you look at the part-time money, it goes up to five hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, and that was to add the second firefighter that we're not funding through overtime, just so we could put those two firefighters in a vehicle and put them out on the road. If I was not to get any of that, we would certainly not turn that person away, but how we would deploy them would be, you know, whether we put them on as part of a four-man engine or, you know, make a paid, just as paid driver position for, you know, the ladder truck or something like that, but it's, it's, the plan as it's been developed, Charlie, is to make all of our calls, not just, you know, the fire calls, but, you know, what is, we're still thinking about our daily workload, which is the amount of EMS calls that we have. And historically, we haven't been spending, sending enough people to those EMS calls. So, the light rescue truck would make all of those calls that much more efficient. Another thing it does is, you know, turnaround time is important, the amount of time it takes from beginning of the call to the ambulance is back in town and available for another call. If we can get them turned around faster on the front end, they're back in town sooner on the back end. So, that would make this, this way of deploying these people in the light rescue is designed to look at all of our operations and how we can make them all that much more efficient with the available staffing that we're hoping for.
So, I know Bob has, like, got some questions, and he also did some analysis that I think will be helpful to us as well.
Yeah, so, I'm making an assumption here that you're going to decrease what you're gonna use for the part-time folks here?
So, what we would do, Bob, is this year's request would be completely, you know, the three hundred and four thousand, you reduce by ten percent and it's in contingency. That would all go to fund this. We would leave the existing part-time money of fiscal year 2018 the way it is, but it would reduce the overtime line item by eighty-four thousand and change, which is what we pay that Rescue Two firefighter out.
But that would be going forward, so you see that year one, two, all the way through year five here, so what I'm trying to get to is that million two that we have out there, right?
Right, yep.
So, you know, my thought process is, you know, you're charged with about one point seven revenue at this point. If we kept that as a target, at anything we get over that, possibly we use to offset, maybe there's another two, two hundred and fifty thousand or three hundred that you bring in, maybe able to offset that, and because, I mean, that's the moving target is what do we do and get to year five?
Right.
So, we've gotta try to offset that. So, immediately, we think we can take down about two hundred thousand, is my understanding?
Yeah, I think, I think this year, our target's one-six-two-five, and I'm hoping to do about three better than that. And so, we've increased the, next year's target to one-seven-two-five, so a hundred grand more if I remember correctly and reading the budget. So, at least another two hundred.
Okay.
We're gonna get close to the two million mark, whether we hit it this year or next year, we're pretty confident we're gonna hit it, as long, again, as long as our call volume and our rate of ALS billing, which is the advanced care billing, stays the same, which, you know, we, occasionally, we see a little dip in it, but historically, when you look at over a longer period of time, it keeps going up, so.
So, in the next four years, then we would receive about fifty-five percent in the grant, about a million six-eight-four, is that about right?
From the grant.
Okay, okay. So, now, the worst-case scenario would be calls that would increase if they go the other way. How do we offset?
If the calls should go the other way, the first thing we would do is eliminate the part-time contingent, which is the currently two hundred and fifty-two thousand in the budget.
Okay, and that would keep those eight full-time, new full-time people busy all day long.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, my thought is that it would cost us about nine hundred and thirty-two thousand to get to the fifth year. Is that correct?
I think you're right.
So, we would just have to work with the finance director and see if that's possible, to have a target number out there, as a, as a target number and if we go over.
Well, a target number, Bob, would be the number we'd put in the budget, so, and that's really under our control as much as it is under Mr. Finch's, but, so, you know, that's probably, you know, by raising the target, as long as it's realistic, I don't think there's an issue there. Because we usually under, we also try to underestimate if-
So, we take conservative posture, yeah.
So, and just to keep in, you know, in mind the revenue side, in that conservative posture, we've exceeded it, you know, once we started to increase with the part-timers, we were able to get that revenue in. So, in my fire mouth world, Charlie, put that money in the bank a little bit, and we've cost you nothing for the last six years.
You're telling me that's in either Charlie's or Jim's fund balance, is what you're telling me. So, I mean, part of the analysis here, and then I wanna hear from Jamie and Jim on this as well, is that, and Jim kinda simplified it for me over a month ago, which is, you know, if we're gonna hire, if in fact, down the road, we're gonna add personnel, then this gives us an option to get in early, okay? The challenge is because of the size, as you pointed out, there hasn't been a manpower increase since two thousand and five or whenever, and it's a big chunk, and so we, that's why we're deliberating it as much as we are. I think Bob's analysis is very helpful, and to some extent, you know, it's because you've, because we've responded to the medical and we think our hand is forced to some extent by your pushing on the request for additional part-time in order to adequately staff, so that, you know, it's something that we have to take seriously, knowing that down the road, we do have fiscal uncertainty at the state level and elsewhere. But at the same time, I think you've pointed out that there's gonna be a growing need, Branford is expanding and there's a, there's an increased demand, so. But at the end of the analysis, it seems like either you go for the eight or you don't go at all, because the numbers you're putting in front of us do not, the four men, you're just saying you won't put the four men-
If, from the grant perspective, yes, eight, eight, eight or-
If you're gonna apply for the grant, you go for eight, 'cause you're not gonna get four.
'Cause we're not gonna get four, but what we did include in here is if we were unsuccessful, again, it doesn't change the need, but how could we get to the need in a more cost-effective way? Again, this last page allows us an opportunity, and there is a typo in there where it says grant toward the bottom. This is a non-grant scenario, and so it includes phasing in mid-year hiring of the first four and then an additional in the, in the next mid-year timeframe.
Yeah.
So, it's-
And I think that, you know, I know we've got more questions as well, but I think that if, if in fact, you go for the grant and you don't get it, then it's almost like all bets are off, because then you still have, you still have the part-time in contingency, which hopefully the RTM will leave it in contingency until we understand what the, what the outcomes are.
Right.
Not only tonight, but elsewhere, because then we have to look at and say, okay, I applied for the grant, I didn't get the grant, we still have a need. What are all the alternatives?
Right.
Not just adding more staffing at one, and/or that may be the answer. Victor?
Chief, can you explain how you get to the stretch point? How many ambulances do you dispatch before you're really stretched for a fire response?
So, half of our available career firefighter paramedics are deploying on two ambulances, so two, two in each ambulance. That leaves three firefighters on the engine and the deputy chief. When both of those ambulances are out, there's half of our career firefighter force.
What do you do next?
What's that?
What do you do next?
Well, we rely, again, very heavily in Branford on our volunteer firefighting force, and-
Do you dispatch the engine still?
The engine would go to the next medical, and then we would do a calling crew for ambulance four or five or three when it's not being used. Medic, the part-time right now is what we call Medic Three, and that's staffed Monday through Friday till eight, till midnight, and then the weekend's eight hours. So, outside of those hours, those three ambulances are call-in ambulances, where we have to call in people from the outside.
So, the third one is, are you relying on part-timers and-
Right.
They actually go out first to lead the firefighters, so the part-time ambulance goes out first.
Throughout the day. But the call volume being what it is, one, two, and three are pretty much always turning over, and a lot of times, they're all out simultaneously, and so that's, that's what I mean about absorbing that, that stretch. Our calls don't come in one at a time or two at a time, they come in one, two, three at a time, and then nothing for a while, then one, two, three, four, and then maybe you get a one here and a two there, but that's, that's really the threat on a regular basis is those multiple calls are becoming more frequent where there's nobody for longer periods of time than either one of us are comfortable with. And certainly, the commission lies awake at night, too, because they all do listen to the calls on the scanner, so.
I wanna commend you, by the way, on your explanation last week. I was on the telephone and I could really understand what you were saying, so.
That was you?
No.
I'm hoping I'm making it a little bit more clear than most, so.
Yep.
That's good. Charlie?
Chief, does a safer grant allow you to do four and four per the number of years that you indicated?
No, it's, when you apply for the grant, what we have to do is show the staffing, even though it's named staffing for adequate fire and emergency response, it's really geared towards your ability to adequately staff the fire ground in a, in a, in the period of time that meets the standard. So, if you recall last week when I showed how all the jobs that need to be done on the fire ground simultaneously, the grant is designed to look at your ability to meet the standard seventeen-ten, which says you have to have X number of firefighters on the fire ground within a period of time. So, it says, well, what are, what's your ability to do that now? Is it forty percent, you know, is it fifty percent? And if this grant, if you're awarded the grant, what percentage of the time will you be able to meet that standard? If we're only able to make it a little bit more with, with four guys, the impact, the chances of us being successful is just that the impact to our ability to meet that standard is not as great as if we had the eight. And that's why, that's really the reason we're, we're trying to up the impact, and at the same time, it does stay true to the eventual goal of our part-time plan, which was to have two firefighter paramedics on a non-transporting ambulance. So, I could really care less whether they're part-time or full-time or how I get there, it's just that having two years of experience with the part-time staff and knowing how many more part-timers I would need to fill all these shifts, it's just, it doesn't, it's not, it's gonna be a very difficult task to manage.
Now, we kinda concentrate on the, on the income, but this, as you told me, was really a grant for firefighters, not for paramedics or-
Right, it's, and it's designed to bring us more back into balance with being both the fire and EMS provider and not just strictly an EMS provider, which is kind of where we're, we're at with our staffing right now, because that's all about, we're able to absorb is EMS. It's never-ending.
Okay, good. Jeff?
Chief, with regards to the grant, I had opportunity to review it over the weekend, and I guess there's components about hiring staff, and there's also a component about considering additional incentives for volunteers. Did the board discuss anything regarding volunteers rather than just staffing needs? And I understand the demographics of volunteers and the ability, not, what was there?
So, the short-
Just kinda throwing it out there.
Yeah, no, so the short answer is, is yes, of course it's considered, and it's an ongoing consideration. Branford already has both an incentive program and a retirement program for our volunteers. Unfortunately, I think during the budget process this year, we reduced the amount of money available for the stipend because we didn't have that many people earning it as we have in the past. And that's kind of the reality of where we are with the volunteers. We've incentivized it already. I'm not sure if, you know, if there's any, if we'd really get any more benefit of having like a paid-on-call type situation, because those people still need to be available to get paid to go on that call.
I know we have a cadet training program?
We do.
How do we entice those young individuals to continue to stay involved and help us out?
So, we, what we found a little bit is, we bring them in as explorers through, it's really a Boy Scout type of program. Then they become cadets, and so we're getting them trained, and we hope to get them into like, you know, really say, hey, you know, this is something I could do. So, we'll pay for them to go to firefighter one, we'll pay for them to go to EMT school. Now, EMT school is not cheap, it's about, you know, fourteen hundred to seventeen hundred dollars, depending on which class to get in. And then we try to get them involved with the ambulance and give them a part-time job. So, a lot of our part-time EMT-only people are our own volunteers. They are the ones that we rely on very heavily for the qual'ns, ambulances, and again, we're not seeing the response, and these guys are getting paid pretty, pretty well.
I understand.
I just think it's a sign of the times, the volunteers that we're getting in the door are not staying nearly as long, they're, they're either not staying in our line of work, or they are staying in our line of work and they're getting to be paid firefighters and then they're not volunteering anymore. And then we have a lot of older volunteers, and what's missing is that middle group.
I just have one last question, Joe. If a favorable decision was reached tonight, in understanding that, you know, the call volume is somewhat flat or up and down a little bit, how long, this might put you on the spot, how long do you think the staffing level would continue to support the department into the future?
So, historically, Jeff, we've seen an increase about every ten years or so since as far back as I can look. So, when the career staff started, I think it was like sixty-one, they, it was the first time, but around sixty-three, they, they added maybe one other person. I was told that probably around seventy-three is when they bumped up that shift, and then again in the eighties, when we absorbed the ambulance, and then again in ninety-seven, and then it was two thousand and five, and that's the last time we had any significant, we have added a few staff positions because of all the management stuff, but-
So, you might be retarded- So you might be retired before you come back and ask more?
I think so. I think so.
October twenty-second, nineteen sixty-three.
I firmly believe that being in the top leadership position should only be about ten years.
Thank you.
If I could make just a quick point concerning the hiring of staff, Jeff brought up a very valid point of what it costs to send someone to the fire academy and as well as train them to become a paramedic. And so I can tell you, over the last fifteen years as we've hired staff for the fire department, and probably in the last three years, it seems to me to be the most prevalent, when we've interviewed people that have already, were already paramedics with medical control, we've hired people that have already gone through the fire academy and had those credentials as well, and while there's no guarantee that if we're able to hire eight new staff, that any of them will have that, but I think that in that number of eight, there's a good chance that a few of them are gonna have some of the credentials, so I don't think we'd see the exposure of, of full education for, for eight individuals.
Thanks, thanks, Dave. Mr. Massey, anything you'd like to say?
I think you heard it all from me before. I just do it simple, we've kicked the can down the road, and we can't kick it anymore. It's, it's, like he said, you know, I sleep, you know, twenty-four, seven with that radio, you know, at work and at home, and I worry sometimes about these trucks getting out. I'm not gonna kid ya, it's, you could ask Shelley, I said, I gotta go to the firehouse and get an ambulance, I don't know what to do with them, I get there anymore, but, you know, not to scare anybody, but it's, it's at the, we're at the sign of the times.
You can drive.
Yeah, I know I can drive it, but you know, you know.
That's where it's at.
Yeah.
Buzz?
As the oldest fire commissioner from way back, I've seen the department grow over the years. When I came on, we had nineteen firefighters, one chief. We're in twenty-eighteen now, and we have thirty-four firefighters and two chiefs, but we didn't have the ambulance then. So when we brought the ambulance over, that's when changes started. It was definitely trial and error, but in looking back, we brought them, nineteen ninety-four, I believe. I think we've done one heck of a job. As Bobby says, listening to the, the radio, there are days when my heart is breaking because it keeps saying, please don't any more calls come in, because we don't have anybody else to go out. The safer grant would help us immensely. It's not a cure-all. We know that if it was approved by you, the RTM, there is no guarantee that we would even get the grant, because there are thousands of firefighters or fire departments looking for the same grant. But we do, that's why I said, I look back to the budget, this is nineteen ninety-one, our budget was one point four million, which seems not very much, and we jump it up now today to, well, we're almost six million dollars. But yeah, we, we appreciate you, you all taking extra time with us, and we'll just keep our fingers crossed.
Thanks, Buzz. Sean, you're the only one we haven't heard. You might throw at us?
No, I mean, I think that the chief has, chief has told you what our need is, and it's a need that we've seen for years, and, you know, previously, Chief Ahern, myself, we've been here to you, talking all the way back to two thousand and five about the safer grant, and about our needs. And the need continues as the town continues to grow, and healthcare facilities continue to come in town, and outpatient facilities, and the aging population. We just, it's a need, and the anxiety is there for all of us to make sure that we can cover that next call.
Thanks, and I think, you know, before we go to a vote, I do want to have some comments from Jamie on this. I think right now there's probably support for the eight positions in the grant, but again, if in fact we do not get the grant, then as I said, it's not all bets are off, but yeah, all bets are off and we...
Come back and work with some others.
What the plan is.
Yeah.
Well, we appreciate it. So Jamie, any final comments before you...
Yeah, I mean, thanks, Joe. Certainly, when you hear increasing staff by eight, it sounds like an aggressive, an aggressive staffing increase. However, I think, you know, we all have to be mindful that it's a twenty-four, seven, three-sixty-five day operation, and really what we're talking about is going from an eight-man shift to ten, and, you know, the chief, as he laid out, the staffing levels currently exist, the apparatus that's required to respond to these calls. I think it's, it's clear that there needs to be, there is a stretch on, on the resources that currently exist, and, you know, the last few years, the chief and assistant chief have been, and the commission have been developing a plan to try to absorb that stretch, but they're at the point where, you know, we, we either have to, you know, increase our staff, and again, it's, we're talking about two people per shift. You know, Joe, I think you're right, I think it makes sense to apply for the eight, and again, as mentioned, this is a competitive process. We may not be successful, and then we would have to reevaluate, but we're, I think, you know, I think it's recognized that there's a demand on the department, there's a need to increase, add staffing, and this is an opportunity for us to do it in a way which we can absorb the impact. So I, I support the board's decision if they ultimately decide to support the department in applying for the eight positions.
Thanks. Jim, anything you'd like to add? I know you contributed to some of the numbers here, so thanks for that.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just to kind of summarize it from what I've seen, I think, I think, Joe, you know, relaying our conversation, you know, the point is that if you believe that being ten people per shift is the right number, the chief, based on his professional sensibilities, thinks that's the right number, the first selectmen put it in a great context when you look at it over twenty-four hours. I was sort of looking at some of the differences, too, Bob, and I, yeah, I was kind of scribbling some numbers off. I was listening to it, and I, I think, you know, when you look at this sheet, it looks like this, you know, so if you've already made the decision that it makes sense to add two people, you know, then you're looking at roughly eight hundred and, you know, say thirteen or eight hundred and nineteen thousand versus if you go to the last option, the four thirty-six, eight hundred, and that's the difference between doing it all with part-timers and all with full timers, notwithstanding what the chief has identified as the challenges of managing almost, you know, three times as many people because of the way they're split and the part-timers, et cetera. I try to get a sense of, okay, well, what does, what does this do to a budget going forward? And, you know, so if you look at the eight nineteen, five thirty-six, because of, which is really the top number, well, to your point, Joe, there's, well, there's, you've already contributed two seventy-four, two eighteen in contingency towards a, a solution, which leaves a difference of about, you know, five hundred and forty-five thousand. If you take the four thirty-six, eight hundred, minus the two seventy-four, two eighteen towards that solution, you're looking at a hundred and sixty-two, five eighty-two. You're roughly looking at a difference of anywhere, let's just call it three hundred and eighty thousand in round numbers. And so if there was no safer grants, and all this went into effect on July eighth, just to kind of make the experiment work, you would need to tax for an additional three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to make up for the benefit cost. But in reality, it's probably gonna be offset to some degree in, in three different ways. I mean, one of them's gonna be more taxes, and that's the question you make every year, what, what are we trading this additional two people per shift for in the answer? Some of it's more taxes, some of it is a less conservative posture on revenue, which we've kind of talked about, and then the other's a safer grant. And then with the hope over time, you know, we're basically, you know, not turning up the heat all at once, we're basically, you know, managing that, we're amortizing it, although unlike a bond, this will go on forever, but, but you're finding a way to, to smooth it, and you're trying to do it in a way that's, you know, somewhat logical and budget-sensitive. So I think if, if the safer grant is available and there's a, a successful application, it, it does help on that, that smoothing, which is not an unusual concept for us. We, we try to smooth when it comes to funding our pension, we try to smooth when it comes to the debt service. So, I mean, I think there's elements of that smoothing at work here, so that it's not, you know, the taxpayer's not getting hit with that three hundred and eighty-two thousand all in year one. So that, that was kind of my sort of look at this, you know, and then all the other analysis, which looks pretty thorough to me, is essentially really then, okay, well then how, how do we sort of, you know, how do we split this, how do we smooth this, and those are other ways of, of doing it. But, but essentially, in a worst case, it looks like it's about a three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar difference without the grant, without any additional revenue. And again, you know, how do you phase that in over time, so...
Thanks, Jim. Okay, I'll be entertaining a motion if somebody wants to make a motion.
Who?
I'll make a motion. Jeff's making a motion, which is what?
I'll make a motion to recommend to the Branford Fire Commission to apply for the safer grant for eight full-time firefighter/paramedic positions.
Second.
Second by Bob. And so if the grant is, were successful in the grant, you would bring those firefighters on in January of nineteen?
Yes.
That's part of your grant application. Okay, any other discussion?
Just one comment. Are you gonna do the split and bringing those in?
In reality, by the time, should we be successful with the grant, by the time all was said and done, we would be looking at a January hire anyways, which is one way to also make it spread out a little bit better, so...
Okay, discussion, any more discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, next, second and final item on our agenda is to consider, and if appropriate, review and provide an advisory opinion to the Board of Selectmen concerning the guaranteed maximum price, maximum proposal, GMP dated March twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen for Francis Walsh Intermedia School pursuant to four, forty-two dash one of the code of the town of Branford. And Lisa did forward us the, the document, and let Jamie address it. This is really the, the GMP which he signed, not sure when, but you signed it for a total of sixty-eight million, four hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars. Would you like to go over that, Mr. Cosgrove? It's all on you.
Well, as, as you know, the, this board had approved an appropriation for the Walsh Intermedia School of eighty-eight million dollars. During that time, we've brought in our design team, our owner's rep, and our construction manager, Fusco, which all were selected through an RFQ process during that time, and as we built the budget, we anticipated that this project would be essentially a guaranteed maximum price of about seventy million dollars. Fusco is, all the subcontracts lie directly with Fusco. We have one contract that was reviewed and approved that we've entered into Fusco when we engaged them last year. A couple of months ago, Fusco went out competitively bid various scopes of work, reviewed those bids, did their scope review with each of the subcontractors, and ended up rewarding the bids. There were a couple that had to be withdrawn, and, you know, they went through that process. Fusco then presented to the building commission a guaranteed maximum price of, as stated, Joe stated, sixty-eight million, four hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight oh seven. So that is the, includes Fusco's fees, contingency for the project, general conditions, as well as the various scope of work. So I just brought that pursuant to forty-two dash one, it was, you know, for abundance of caution, I would say, we had legal review, said, you know, let's just bring it back to the board, although you've approved the bonding authorization. However, forty-two dash one says any contract, amendment to a contract, extension of a contract that exceeds one year and ten thousand dollars goes to the Board of Finance for a review and to the Board of Selectmen. So that's why I bring it to you tonight for your review.
Thanks, Jamie. Now, when Fusco received bids, competitive bids on all the trades and the subcontracts, the drawings are at what percentage?
Yeah, so it's, the, the drawings are done, it's about a hundred percent complete. They anticipate to begin the project this June, right after the school gets out, which I think gets out first or second week now with the snow days, I think close to the second week of June, and the contractor will mobilize on-site in June.
So, and do you, is, do you know, or have any idea what the risk of unforeseen conditions might be that might bite into the, any contingency?
Um, you know, there's, there's always something that may appear, there's, but I, I think it's important to note that we've done extensive environmental testing, we have a pretty good idea of what's on the site, that's your biggest driver. We've done a soil analysis, so I think as far as any of those types of things that would show up that can typically drive a project, we've done a fair mark, a fair amount of analysis. I think it's one important thing to note, you know, with this project, you know, when we did our environmental testing, we've identified things throughout the building. You know, the building commission made a decision that, and the town staff and the Board of Ed, that this, this building will be a hundred percent abated. You know, in the past, we've done some projects where we may have found some things, and we've addressed that through appropriate measures to ensure, through encas...
Encas...
Excuse me. Incas... Incasulation.
Incap...
Incasulation. I gotta need water. So, but, you know, this, the, the, we've decided to remediate the entire school, so that'll occur. It's also important to note, that is the CM's contingency, that number there that you have, which is...
Three and a half percent.
Three and a half percent of the project, however, there's still an owner's contingency that's in the project as well.
Thanks, Jamie. Questions from the board? Charlie?
Hey, Jamie, I saw the time limit here is September of twenty-twenty-one. Are there any incentives in here for the finishing sooner?
Don't believe there's any incentives, there's, this is a phase, construction is two-phase project. I think, you know, a lot of the work needs to occur in the summertime when the kids are not there, that's when the meat of the project gets done, so I think it'd be difficult to, to have that...
So there aren't any incentives built in?
No, but there's, there's liquidated damages, they don't, do not complete.
Okay. Listen, from my limited exposure of building, change orders can really hurt the project. So I mean, did the building commission talk about change orders?
Well, you know, certainly that's always a concern, and that's why, you know, you want to make sure that your, your drawings are tight, that they're, before you go out to bid, and reviewed, and you do a thorough scope review with the contractors. So, you know, like I said, Fusco holds the contracts with the subs, they, they've performed their scope reviews prior, they didn't just go on low bid, they, they interviewed the, those who responded, and to ensure that they included everything. You know, as far as, this is a GMP, a guaranteed maximum price, now, there's always opportunity for change orders, you're right. However, the benefit of a GMP is essentially Fusco is reviewing the drawings that went out to bid, and they're, feel comfortable that they can deliver the project set on that guaranteed maximum price. That's what they're saying, so it would be, the burden would lie on them if they were to come back and say, for some reason, something was not in there, that would be outside of that, that GMP.
Yeah, the way I read that, it's a guaranteed contractor key unless we change that.
Right.
Okay, other questions? Okay, other questions? If not, somebody want to move the sensitive board to...
I'll move it, Joe.
Approve this contract? Most have been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with no other, with no other business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved, thank you.